Good evening and welcome to the March 6, 2017, meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On to item number two, public participation. If there's one person in the room who does not seem to want to join public participation, so we will close it. And we're on to item number three, which is the approval of the 2017-2018 school calendar based on parent survey outcomes. The board was in receipt of two emails regarding the calendar and people's feedback, and for the most part, it aligned closely with what the outlook of the draft was, with some small -- one had a small suggestion to start a couple days before Labor Day, but other than that, you know, the other one actually said they were happy it started after Labor Day, so called that a neutral. But what we also did was the district calendar survey that went out through the parent portal, and it was on our website as well. And that's where the results we want to review tonight are coming in. So we had 1,426 people respond to the survey. So with that, we'll go through the different results for the camera, because we have them in front of us, but we wanted to let you know basically what the feedback from families were. The question number one was, "Do you support having no school on Columbus Day, which falls on October 9, 2017 this year?" Fifty-four percent said, "Yes, they support having no school," and 46% said, "No, I don't support having no school." So 54% is the dominating response. Question number two is, "Do you support having no school the Wednesday before Thanksgiving?" Seventy-three percent supported having no school the day before Thanksgiving, and 27% did not support having no school the day before Thanksgiving. So the 73% is definitely the dominating yes, keep school closed that day. Item number three was, "Do you support having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day?" That was 52% in support of having no school on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and 48% that would prefer to have school in session. So the dominating response is to have no school on Martin Luther King Day. Question number four is, "Do you support having no school on President's Day, which is February 19, 2018, recognizing the following week is February vacation?" Twenty-seven percent of respondents said, "Yes, they support having no school," or 73% preferred to have school in session on President's Day. And then question number five is, "With teacher workshops being held prior to the first day of school per our contract with the Merrimack Teachers Association, we have scheduled the first day of school to be the day after Labor Day. Are you in support of continuing the scheduling structure?" Eighty percent are in support of continuing the scheduling structure of having schools start the day after Labor Day, with 20% in favor of starting before Labor Day. So with that feedback and with the draft calendar that we were presented originally on the 6th of February at our February School Board meeting, it's, you know, we definitely want to talk about what we want to do as a board for the final result for our calendar for 2017-2018. Does anyone have any feedback, questions, or comments based on -- yes, Michael?
Thank you. I just have a question. The Wednesday before Thanksgiving, if we -- could we actually do a half a day and get a -- we can, okay?
Well, to be clear, I think you could do a half day as long as you served lunch and be credited for the school day.
Well, my question is, can we not, you know, so I just, I'm just trying to think of the future. I'm not looking for this year, but that might be an option to look into, and I think an option to maybe add to next year's questionnaire, saying, "Do you want off? Do you want a half day that will count as a full day? Or do you want it all to have it?"
Andy?
The only thing I recall is, we used to, I mean, back in the way, the early days when I went to school here, it was a half day the day before Thanksgiving. But there was a lot of pushback. Half-days in general are hard for parents that have daycare things, because if the bus comes home early, they maybe not be able to get off work early, and they have to make arrangements during that one day of what to do to kids in the afternoon. So it's, it'll be interesting if we do ask the question that way, give them sort of three options, what the response is, because in the past, worrying about a half a day planned has been difficult for some.
I would just say that a full day is probably just as difficult as a half day, because then you have to get childcare or something else for that full day, right?
No, I was thinking, if somebody has to work full day, and they normally don't worry about afternoon daycare, kids come home on the bus.
So what we're doing-
If they come home on the, at 12 o'clock or 12:30.
But what I'm saying is, we're actually having it off at this point anyways, so they have to take care of the child for that day. So it's complications either way.
Right, right. It's, it does that. But the key is, it'll be, you do have to go for lunch, so it's actually more than a half a day. It's actually closer to two-thirds of the day, so.
Marge?
So Mike asked the question, "Could we do that?" The answer is yes. And when we have done it in the past, the attendance, the student attendance was poor. So from an instructional point of view, it's like you lose something if we think in terms of the faculty and preparing lessons and so on, because we've been asked to track that by boards and have done that. So that's one of the downsides.
So the, any other questions or comments on the proposed 2017-18 calendar? Andy?
So I think what caught me of interest is how close the feedback was on both Columbus Day as well as Martin Luther King Day. I mean, 54 to 46 is a majority, 52 to 48 is really close. I mean, one could argue that it's statistically almost a dead heat, if you take the pollsters from the last election. But I think if we had a later end date, it might be something for us to consider, maybe using one of those days, but given the fact that currently the last day of school is the 14th of June, I would, I'm in favor of keeping the calendar the way that it is with both days off, even though it was sort of pretty close in terms of the feedback that we got. Although it's something to consider for future years, should we get caught with a really late end of school, we might want to consider evaluating one of those two days.
Right. And I would have to say with October, I believe there were things like soccer tournaments and, you know, college visits. So those were the things I remember. I think there was also some, like I said to your PSAT preparation stuff that were, was happening that time of year. So those are the two things I remem -- those are the three things that I remember from Columbus Day. And when it came to the January Martin Luther King holiday, I think it really is about acknowledging the fact that it is a cultural holiday that is deserving and an appropriate recognition for all that Dr. King did. So for those who are in support of that, I think a lot of it did have to do with, you know, the cultural significance of what that day means and being able to take the time to honor him. So that's the feedback I remember getting as well.
Well, I did just want to feedback really quick. I completely agree, but when you're caught with a calendar like we had last year, where it goes out really late, it may be something for us, it's a hard decision to make, but it's something to consider, as long as we're still doing the day methodology, so that's the only.
Definitely. Michael, and then Cindy?
I just had a second thought with, do other schools actually use the last day as the day that they have noted, based off of potential snow days? Like, to me, I think of the 22nd as the last day of school for next year. I think of that where it could be actually less, depending on snow days. So I'm not sure if other schools communicated that they have their calendar set where the 22nd's technically the last day of school, depending on snow days, it actually could be determined to be earlier. I'm just wondering if other schools might communicate it differently, or do they communicate that this is the last day and it could be pushed out further?
I would say, again, as many school districts as you have in this state, you have theme and variation. That's number one. I would say most in the South Central Region, add makeup days at the end. When you chart your calendar and send it to the Department of Ed, they expect you to do that. And so most will just extend the days.
Thank you. And on that note, I know I've gotten, I've heard over the years, so not specific to this request, but feedback that parents took that last day of school, didn't look at the MUs and plan vacations for that first week. As the closer you get to July, the more expensive the vacation gets, so that their kids are missing the last week of school, or they lost their vacation deposits, those kind of things. But, you know, makeups are there for definitely a designed reason. And also, as you're planning your child's summer, you know, camps and all of that, that to schedule them accordingly. So it's that, expect the unexpected days, and I think that we really, you know, can communicate that more strongly, but that's that they're truly eligible school days. I think that, you know, families really need to look at them as school days that, you know, have the potential of being given back to the kids for the summer, if weather permits, but we are definitely not in charge of that, so. So with that, is there any other, Cindy, you had something?
Actually, I'll just say something regarding what you just said. But as you, you know, as you do get closer, like, well, to Andy's point, this is what I was going to say, when we have a after Labor, a Labor Day like last year that was so late, it makes total sense to look at it a little bit differently, because you're definitely pushing out. But the other point I was going to make is that by the time April comes around, you pretty much know what that last day of school is going to be. You know, there's only, some, snow days are only going to go.
Don't say.
But, I mean, it's, but it's, we all take that, right? It's not predictable by anybody. And so I, I'm comfortable with the makeup days, you know, where we think the last day is, and then those makeup days, they push out. You know, you get a snow day, it pushes out. So I'm comfortable with how the calendar is. I love the survey results. I love that there was such a great participation in it. I know that's something that we've really wanted and we've been moving towards over the, at least the time I've been on the school board, so it gives people a voice for something that's important to them, so.
And the results this year over last is nearly triple. So it's about 500 last year, and it's closer to 1,500 this year, so you're definitely getting that, that feedback that we were seeking from the parents, so that's a very positive thought. So on this, do we feel that the, if someone feels that this is the appropriate calendar for 1718, if they feel like they'd like to make a motion, I will accept one at this time. Andy?
I move that we accept the draft calendar as post, as we've, as was posted for the survey as well as what we see tonight, and make that our calendar for the next, for 2017-2018.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Michael. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. Opposed, none, and the motion carries 400. And I forgot to mention, so a little housekeeping, I'm sorry. Board member Naomi Schoenfeld is traveling for work and is excused from tonight's meeting. So sorry, Naomi, and we will see you Wednesday at the deliberative session. So I guess a plug as well. Onto item number four, which is the first reading of new policy, and I will turn that over to Marge.
Thank you. So tonight before, we have before you a policy that we have not had with our policies, obviously brand new, and we think it's important to put before you. It's entitled, "Elected Appointed School District Officials." First is the clerk of the district. The clerk of the school district shall be elected to a three-year term during the town elections and shall not be a member of the school board. The clerk shall serve, pardon me, the clerk shall receive such remuneration as the district may determine. The clerk shall keep a true record of each district meeting and make any reports to the state of New Hampshire as may be required, and shall carry out duties as described in applicable statutes. Number two, treasurer. The treasurer of the school district shall be elected to a three-year term during the town elections and shall not be a member of the school board. The treasurer shall receive such remuneration as the district may determine and perform such duties pertaining to the fiscal affairs of the school district as outlined in the New Hampshire statutes relating to public schools. The treasurer may appoint a deputy treasurer with the approval of the school board and in accordance with the applicable statute. Number three, moderator. The moderator of the school district should be elected to a three-year, that should say term, during the town elections and shall not be a member of the school board. The moderator shall receive such remuneration as the district may determine and perform such duties as outlined in New Hampshire statutes relating to public schools. Then there is a list of legal references. As you can see, predominantly RSA 179:19:20:22-A, :24-A, and RSA 671:6 and 671:31, all having to do with school district meetings and officers.
Are there any questions or comments of this policy? Andy?
So I know when we had the discussions about the treasurer at our last meeting, we know that with the loss of the treasurer, that we named the school board chair as the signatory authority for the district. And during our discussions, we talked about having a secondary one. Now, the policy that you've written says the treasurer may appoint a deputy treasurer. Is there, it seems loose to say "may" because it's sort of up to the, it makes it sound like it's up to the purview of whoever the treasurer is, that he or she would appoint it. I'm wondering if, if it's better practice to have a deputy named simply for the case of travel or some other's thing. I mean, I know we had a death this time, which is like the worst case, but there may be other cases that may or not do it. So that was, that was the only thing that caught me a little strange here, was the "may" appoint in the policy.
So it's the way the statute is written, and this is a model policy put out by the New Hampshire school boards. So as in any policy, the board can change as it wishes. I think, you know, we've gone on all this time and never had one, so for us, just even saying "may" appoint is a step we think in the right direction, and as our budget has gotten larger over time, we think it probably is just a wise thing to do anyway, to, you know, have one in line of the other. And you'll know that the deputy treasurer can name someone, but it is the approval of the school board, so that person would be in charge of coming forward with a name. And obviously, when it refers to the district, it would be Matt and me, who would guide this person.
Matt, you also?
Yeah, if I could just chime in. I had the RSA with me in paper form, but probably one of you guys has it now that I passed out the little sheets they have in front of you. But looking at the RSA, word for word, it says, "The school district treasurer may appoint a deputy treasurer, subject to the approval of the school board." So that's the precise language of 197:24-A.
That's what threw me off. I was looking for these, and it says 179.
It's 197.
Aren't we glad this is the first reading so that we can fix that?
I'm like, I'm like, that's like entertainment and entertainers, or something like that. I'm like-
Well, I just say, there you are. I've got my pen out.
Okay. So on that note, you had something, Michael, other than it's not about entertainers?
So I just have a question. If we're doing, first of all, so this policy is actually dictated by an RSA, right? So I have to, do we have to have a policy when there's an RSA that already dictates it?
We have, I would say, in this particular case, we thought it was very important. I think probably because of the untimely death of the treasurer, someone asked about it, asked about the position, and was looking for a policy, and we didn't have a policy. We could refer to statute. And then we looked for the model school board policies. We found that there was one. We thought it just would make us, make us more complete. So it really just says, when you're looking, you know, you wouldn't be apt to go and look up a statute, but you would be apt to go and look up a school board policy. And so it clearly says, "These are distinct positions, they're separate from the board, but they're important to us, obviously, in the deliberative session in the annual meeting."
I guess, just as follow-up, I guess I'm kind of, I'll have to understand policy more. I just don't like reiter, like, reiterating things that are already dictated by something. To me, it's kind of redundant. But if we're going to do that, don't we also have to put into this, like, in case of the untimely death, what is that next step? Do we get to appoint somebody for the time being? So that's missing for me on this, or is that going to be a separate policy on top of this policy?
No, we could do that in this particular case. The way it fell out, it literally, the death was in February, and so we have until April for the election. So we had a two-month differential, and so.
Well, like, let's say, let's say if this happened right after an election, and there's not an election until April, does the, does the RSA dictate that we can actually appoint someone until next election?
Well, hopefully, what we would have is a deputy, a deputy treasurer.
You'd have a deputy treasurer, but let's say you didn't. RSA:24 says about acting treasurer, "Any person holding the office of treasurer shall, by reason of illness, accident, or absence from state, become temporarily incapacitated." The school board may, unless the district has a deputy treasurer, appoint a treasurer for those duties.
So my question is, wouldn't we want to put that into this too, as the part of the policy?
If you wish.
And that would apply for any of the positions, right? The moderator, the clerk. I mean, it would be not just the treasurer, because the other ones don't have a deputy clerk of the district or a deputy. I think it's kind of, if we're going to spell it out and-
Well, I think they technically do. The moderator has assistant moderators at, and those people are at the ballots, are assistant moderators, so when they put their ballot in the machine, those are assistant moderators.
Okay.
And then I think the deputy, the clerk has deputy clerks that work on election nights to help to certify the election.
With ballots.
So, but they're appointed as needed, and then it's, you know, it's kind of like a one-and-done as needed.
What I'm saying is, if they're no longer able to-
Right, no. And on that note, I think, you know, RSA says one thing, and it says what we can do. Policy says what we want to do, which as long as it's legally supported, we can make the adjustments. So if we change it to say, and I'm looking at the wrong one, the treasurer may, or say the treasurer shall appoint a deputy treasurer with the approval of, you know, to be, or who must be approved by the school board, so something to that effect. So saying that we, as a board, want a deputy treasurer is saying that we are putting that position in place, where when we say "may," it says, "If you feel that there might, there is risk of not having one, you can put one in place as you see fit treasurer." So I think the treasurer shall appoint a deputy treasurer, you know, that we would approve, and I think that's something that we could change the language, and I think it's still legally supported, because it, we're just choosing to, you know, we're electing to do what the RSA's allow us to do. Michael?
So, I'm just diving into this a little further. So we're, we're putting a policy in place for this board that's going to dictate for the future boards what they're going to do, basically, whereas that's normally not something that the boards go for, right? I'm try, I'm, and I'm fairly new to this still, so I'm obviously asking questions and I haven't answered that.
So we have lots of policies in place that our board and any future board goes, and it's up to, if a future board decides the policy's not appropriate, then they undertake the same sort of thing we're doing now. So we hope we're doing something that stands the test of time, but when situations like the treasurer situation this time came up, we have a board have to react. So, so the key is, is do we, do we do something to make sure that it's something that makes common sense, that hopefully future boards would just continue with and not have to modify? Because there's no time, once you do it, it's there until it gets changed. So just to finish a thought, we could state, like, a number four on here that says, "For any of these elected, or for any of these positions, should that, should the, the person not be able to perform their function, the board will appoint, or so," we could just have a generic, because I think the process would be the same for any of the three, unless, except for when there's an assistant that's there. So be, maybe we put a generic statement that talks about the, the way that we fill one of these, should it occur, just to make this policy complete. So, I mean, maybe that's just the way, I mean, and again, I, somebody like Kathy Peale or somebody would need to be able to word it the right way, so it passes the legal muster.
Cindy?
Or even something that says, "In the case that someone cannot perform their duties, we would defer to the RSA's referenced for, to take further action," or something like that, which lets someone that's reading the policy understand that there's, there's more out there that they could go dig into.
Marge?
With the modification that the board has met up with, it will definitely go to legal counsel. So between now and March 20th, Attorney Peale will weigh in on this, about what is appropriate language or not. So tonight, I'm really about conceptual thinking.
Michael?
I'm just trying, I'm thinking this probably way over too much, so, but I'm still going to talk about it.
It's usually me.
But, so to me, like, a policy would be not stuff that's dictated by an RSA, but something like, in treasure, would be like, "Treasurer shall receive such remuneration as district may determine." So like, we would put a policy in place of what we think just for that one section, not how they're elected, elected parts done by the RSA. So a policy, to me, would be that we're trying to just define some of that gray area versus actually defining what's already cooked. To me, I just, I don't like stuff on top of stuff on top of stuff. So to simplify it, like, there, all we're doing at this point is we're defining just that little gray area versus everything else that's already cooked.
Well, I would have to say that with what, with what we're dealing with this year, which is unique in, but, you know, I have to say that we are, you know, we've been lucky. But to that, and my rights are to sign the checks. I, per the, per the definition of the treasurer, it's not one of us. So I'm not doing that job.
This has, to me, this has nothing to do with what just happened, what happened culminated this discussion, but now we're in the discussion, not other stuff, so.
Yeah, I have my notes from over the weekend when I was going through the packet, and the one note I put down was, "If we wanted to put in language, 'The school board has a right to appoint an interim clerk, treasurer, or moderator in the event of an unanticipated vacancy to serve for the remainder of the election year.'" So that's one of those, if, if there's an unexpected vacancy, we have the right to appoint. But, you know, and just for the remainder of the election year, so that, therefore, if this happened in May versus April, we would be able to just have that covered and the job done.
So to me, that, to me, we would define what our policy is a board saying, if it's greater than six months, we appoint somebody. If it's not, then we go with an interim, whatever, but like-
Well, we appoint someone to the election, because we're not going to hold a special election to actually get that person in place.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, to me, one, two, three aren't needed at all. What's needed is us to define what we would do with a deputy treasurer, and what we would decide as a board, what we would do in absence of someone or something like that. To me, this stuff is just repetitive from what's already out there.
And I would have to say, the only thing I would close on is, with a treasurer, and it's just, I think it stands out above the rest, because we have a $73 million budget. And that's something that I feel we cannot have, that we should be in a position to not have a Plan B for. Are we agreeing to agree?
Agree to the Plan B. I disagree that we need one, two, and three. We just need to have Plan B defined as a policy that we decide as a board.
Marge?
So I think what I'd like to do is talk with Attorney Peale about it, and, you know, is there a preference one over the other, and if so, why? And just hear what she has to say. I mean, it really came about because of a query. So normally, you look and see if you have policy in place, and if you don't, then you consider putting one in place when persons start asking, and I think it was getting more into these officials. And I think one wouldn't think about them, because they really happen predominantly in, in the spring. I mean, in March and April, it becomes pronounced as to who are these, and what do they do, and what is their term, and all that. So it surfaced, and I think that's the reason. You'd be more apt to come and look at our policy than you would to hunt for a statute, you know? So it's the prompt, and it's because of happenstance, and often, that's how policy is formed. It comes because you're up against something, somebody asks for something or a clarification, and you go forward. And so if you look under the section in the model school board policy, under organization and governance, this is where this is found. So that's, that's how it came, you know, came to be.
Michael?
I guess, to me, if, if I wanted to know how an elected official has done it, I wouldn't go to the school board, because the school board's not the one that dictates how someone's elected. So that would be done by the state. So what if an RSA changes, and then we didn't change our policy? I would rather reflect back to the RSA- I would rather it reflect back to the RSA than us trying to reiterate what the RSA says. I mean, I'm beating the horse here. I'm obviously one of four, but I just, I disagree that we have to create policy that's already stated.
Andy?
I think generally, this is a good question for Attorney Peel to chime in on what makes sense. I mean, I'm sure there are other policies we have that, that duplicate or replicate RSA as part of it. So, I mean, I don't want us to go back and gut out all of our policies. But on the other hand, I think the, the whole spirit of this is to raise awareness, something I think a lot of us weren't aware of, right? The way that we do this, especially how we appoint treasurer. We know, we have experience with the resignation of a school board member, because we went through that recently. So, here's a case where a treasurer we had to replace outside of an election. So, again, it's something new. I think Attorney Peel's viewpoint on these three, whether we list all the three or only put in differences, or what makes complete sense, is just good to go, because we're, we're sort of postulating at the table.
And I totally agree with the intent, so I don't want to, but I just.
The only question I had that hasn't been addressed is, we are facing, like, when we have our elections, when the Budget Committee, when planning and building up their elections, they're staggered terms. So, you have an odd number of members, and it's staggered so that it's not all, you're not flipping a board, basically, in an election. But these are individual roles. So, Matt, and I'm not sure, I'm putting you on the spot here. I know I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sure of it. When we do have this kind of circumstance where we have to replace someone before their term is up, do we have to do it for the remainder of the term, or can we start a three-year term?
I would say the remainder of the term.
Yep. So, because that's, that's the other question, like, you know, well, they're not going to stagger out, so do we have to do it? So, but the, which was in the first of three years, when, when he passed, so. Cindy?
So, in that case, there would be like an appointment for the remainder of that year, and then would they go on the ballot for the remainder of the term, just like they do for the school boards? Okay.
So, well, my question was answered. So, with that, it looks like we're going to have version two with lots of notes, and we'll hit it up for our next meeting. And we are on to item number five, which is the approval of February 20th, 2017 minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Made by Andy, do I have a second? Seconded by Cindy. Are there any adjustments to the minutes? I had two. Page three, line 118, it says, Assistant Principal Morris and Science Educators Ashley Meehan and Keith Tanner, they are JMU's educators. They're not specifically science teachers. All JMU's teachers have to teach all subjects. And they just are getting some extra science training here, which is still totally cool. And then on page eight, line 345, and I, it's, Chair Barnes asked if the treasurer is confirmed to be added on the upcoming ballot. So, I just wanted to make sure that the window was there to add him to the upcoming ballot, because I knew he was elected, because we were on the same ballot last year. So, and that's all I had. So, with that, we will put the motion to a vote. All those in favor of the minutes, say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 4-0-0. And consent agenda is item number six. And Mark?
On consent tonight, we have two policies, the admission of resident students' policy and admission of tuition and non-resident students' policy.
Thank you, Mark. Just one housekeeping item on this, is there was a wordsmith that didn't material change, materially change the policy for admission of tuition in non-resident students. Tuition, it was listed tuition at the Merrimack School District. We just call it for the Merrimack School District. So, it's just a wordsmith to, to flow better, but not materially different. Cindy?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Seconded by Andy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The motion carries 4-0-0. We're on to, wow, item number seven, which is other correspondence. Is there any correspondence to come before the board, other than the two for the calendar that we all, that we shared out with you? That's all we have. And are there any comments from the board? Andy?
A que, I noticed there's no agenda item talking about Wednesday night for the deliberative session. So, I actually have a question. It's, it'll fit in the comment section, but what the heck? I don't care. When we go and do the presentation of some of these, I know that the notes that you've given out have some good graphical stuff in it. Is the way that it's going to work on, on Wednesday night, that we're going to have the ability to display any of these, or will people have handouts of these that are in the room?
I, I think, when you go to do a PowerPoint, in that, in the MUSE APR, the screen comes down, the board has to move away from that front table, and everything's shining in your face, so you have to kind of go away. So, it's a bit awkward. It's really not meant for presentation. So, what I could do, if you would like in the handouts, I could put these pictures that pertain to the warrant articles in there.
Right. Either way, it's just very helpful.
Right.
You know, when I go to explain, for example, the bus loop one, having the picture here, the old picture worth a thousand words kind of thing.
Yeah.
It would be very helpful to, to people that are there. And then we can maybe post it on the website, so people that aren't at the DS could see it.
Yeah.
So, it's there. But it would be good just to have it for people that are in the room, so they can see what we're talking about.
For purposes of a handout, I can put the graphic of the, let's see, the sidewalk, and then the asbestos map.
Well, you don't need the side, you need the asbestos map, and then the bus loop or the two, the warrant article description.
Right.
Right. That'd be good if you could do that.
So, are we going to do just handouts to the public, and therefore, we don't have to drop the screen?
Correct.
And then we always have, and they've been up for weeks, the same content will be still on our website for those who may be watching from home, have their iPad in their lap or laptop, and, and can follow along on the side there.
It's actually more on the, because it's the full PowerPoint of the thing, so.
So, yes, we will not do the drop screen and scatter. We will just present it from the stage. Marge?
I just want to thank the town, because I requested on your behalf that they had a flagging sign for the deliberative session, which is located across from Buckley's. That's the first time that that's happened, and they followed through, and the request was a while ago, so I'm very appreciative.
Cindy?
I was just going to mention that under comments as well. I noticed that on my way in tonight, so I wanted to thank you for working with the town to get that set up.
And Mark?
Just very briefly, I just want to remind anybody watching that tomorrow at Big Kahuna's begins the district art show. It opens tomorrow. The official opening is Friday, the 10th. There'll be, from 4:30 to 6:00, there'll be music and some food, but it's open throughout the month of March, and so any community members, or parents, or anybody who wants to go look at the great artwork of our students and district, should go to Big Kahuna's and enjoy really a very nice gallery setting, and that begins tomorrow.
I actually grabbed a burger there on the way here tonight, because I was running late, and it's up early. So, I, I got to a sneak peek before the official launch date tomorrow. So, it's definitely up, if you go for breakfast tomorrow, it'll be ready for you. So, and they really did a great collage. You're not going to get just, like, elementary in one section. They, they mixed it based on the genre. So, you will see, you know, the evolution of a style of art from a first grader up to what a 12th grader can do. So, it's really, it was done very nicely by, by the art educators who put that together. So, thank them for us as well when you see them at, in the buildings. Are there any other comments from the board? Seeing none, I will say, is there any new business to come before the board, which is number eight? Seeing none. Committee reports, are there any committee reports from the board? Andy?
I just have one. On February 23rd, I attended the Suresk Board of Directors meeting in Bedford. Couple of points of note, the, the catering in the, oh, God, I'm going blank in it. Right. But I mean, the, the, the event side of the house at Suresk, where they, they host events, and they cater events and things. The management of that and the day-to-day delivery has been moved from Suresk to a company called Tidewater that does, that now runs the day-to-day management of the event center side of Suresk. So, that caused some staffing changes and things, but it helped with the, the cash flow and, and the sort of flow of Suresk, and got them out of the business of doing the events, so they can focus on the core business from a, a management perspective. The other thing is that the, they're still attempting to, to sell and market the building, looking at some different options for purchase and sale options and things. It's ongoing, so we, as a Board of Directors, meet on a monthly basis to see what the status is, and really are much more involved in sort of the ongoing well-being of Suresk than we have been in the past. So, it's a much more active involvement than maybe in previous years, so.
Are there any other committee reports to come for the board? Seeing none, we will close committee reports. Onto number 10, public, comments on agenda items, still the same person, still not jumping out of her seat, so we will close that. I will, before we sign the manifesto, I will announce that Wednesday is the school district deliberative session, 7 o'clock at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, and we will be going over the warrant, and we look forward to seeing our committee there that night. And with that, I will take a moment to sign the manifesto, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn, made by Cindy and seconded by Michael. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And we are adjourned. Motion carries 4-0-0. Thank you, and good night.